Good morning.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all for coming today. Mr. Gaines is out of town, so I get the pleasure of running this meeting. Welcome everybody to our November 15th board meeting at this time. Mr. Lay, would you have your application please?
I'm glad to. That's right. Lord, as always, we pause before we ever get started. We thank you for your presence here with us, the power that you bring to this meeting, the wisdom and the discernment that you're going to give to these gentlemen as they consider the business of the county. I thank you that we get a chance today to participate in the governance of the county, Father, the freedoms that we enjoy, they were purchased at a high price, Father, for the sacrifices that were made, so that we might, in fact, express the freedom to kind of participate in our governance for it. That is such a high price to pay, Father, we don't want to take that for granted. God, I thank you that you've given us quality men and women all over this county to work hard every day to keep us safe and protected. Blessed on the bring of home.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. A public comment, we have Chris Bennett. Come on up, fellas.
Well, as always, we brag on Mr. Janus, Ms. Laura, and now Wanda, we worry them to death, and I know we do, but Paul Holly's in here today, because we have worried him. He has filled out application after application, and even the sheriff has been on the phone with us and helping us try to figure out what we're going to do. The reason for all this, it's pretty common in the insurance industry for a program to change paper, they call it, meaning going from ABC company to CBA company. And the problem that we faced, normally, they know the rating, the pricing, how they're going to go about doing business. But this particular time, the pricing was out of whack so bad, and due to having to get new applications and all of the red tape to get it to the companies, we got our renewal quote Monday. It doubled.
This is on the police law liability and on the public officials' liability that covers the board?
It went to $500,000 with $100,000 deducted. Well, you can imagine, the sheriff liked to arrest me. So, thank God. And one time, I can brag on Paul, he had, he had done his due diligence, he had had it sent out to the other companies, which one reason, we had never really, really pushed that, because this is the product endorsed by the Sheriff's Association. They really have a great relationship with the claims people, the attorneys they use. Paul, I think you can vouch for that, you really, and that's a very important key factor to this in order to keeping the claims under control. But since that had been done, and since the, well, since the sheriff runs it like he runs it, there was other companies very interested in quoting it, and we went to pushing that issue. And on this paper Paul handed out to you, if you'll look, we got it, we got the renewal down to the 296, dropping to the million dollar liability limit. And if we chose to go to the $2 million limit, it was 336.
That's the National Sheriff's Association endorsed product.
Option two?
One and two. Because you had a 1 million, 2 million limit, and they can't do it like that, so you either had to go 1 million, 1 million, or 2 million, 2 million. So, we got two options here for that. And then...
Then yesterday, we got the other quote, and you can see them as option three and option four.
Which is with QBE Insurance Company, which is a, both of these are A-rated insurance companies, and we've done business with them in the past, no problems with either one of them.
So, why wouldn't we go with option four?
Well, absolutely no reason not to.
Yeah, there's absolutely no, the only difference is, and we've explained this, we've even, Paul Holly, you want to mention this, because you talked to Jason, and we talked about this yesterday, it's a non-admitted company, is QBE, which only, they chose to be non-admitted. I mean, they're A-rated, they're very financially stable.
And what that means is, they don't come under the regulatory authority of the state insurance commissioner, and part of that is, they had the flexibility in the rates, that they don't have to file the rates, that they can assign the rates the way they want to, which is good for us in this situation, because we're getting a good rate on it.
And we do a tremendous amount of business with QBE, so it's, in no form or fashion are we worried about them at all. And the price difference is unbelievable. Another thing they've agreed to do is use the same claim service, attorneys and all them, as far as the claims.
That's one of the things, I couldn't in there. When they first got back, these two busted, these two have worked tirelessly, because obviously when we got that first number in, we were all a little shocked. But they heard that, they got out there, and they've been trying to find us something, you know, at a better price point. But when they came back from QB, QBE at first, they wanted to use their own, well, we thought, what we heard, they wanted to use their own claims people, and we thought, no, we've got a good thing going. Part of the reason we've been able to keep the price point down is because, the cost down is because of the people we use. So, we wanted to, we said, no, we need to stay with the people we got. They came back, they got on the phone with them, talked with them, and they said, look, we'd be fine with you keeping them, so we want to make sure it stays that way. So, great job by these guys, and we certainly appreciate it, and I think it's going to, I think it's going to work out great, especially saving the county some money, and being able to keep the same people in place that have protected this county for many, many years.
And the great thing is, it's actually less than what it was last year.
Quite a bit less.
And we're getting an additional million dollar layer of liability from 1 million to 2 million, so.
I guess the risk would be, sort of governed, in the whatever you called it, by the insurance commission, is they could change their premiums pretty much on an annual basis without any explanation, anything submitted, or justification, or whatever, because we bid this every year anyway.
Yeah, we bid it every year anyway.
That risk does not really...
And since we're using the same claims TPA to handle our claims, it's also the same broker. So, they have the contract directly with QBE, so we got, we got some power from them, they got the relationship, so I don't think it would change dramatically unless something changed dramatically with us.
Right.
The only thing we're waiting on at this point in time, particularly because y'all having just a one board meeting this month, is the overall approval on this price, the underwriter's given us the price, his boss has to approve. So, that's tomorrow, or Monday or Tuesday, we get that.
Which we talked to the underwriter on the way here, and they was like...
They don't anticipate anything changing.
Nothing to change.
It's kind of a formality, but that's the only thing, we wanted to tell you all that.
Well, so, that would be, I guess, option A, to go with those people, who would be, give you, I guess, give you all the ability to go to option B, in case for whatever reason unknown happened, and they got way out of whack with whatever they decide to come back with, so y'all will have to come back. Would that be appropriate, Ms. Oster, to give them an option B on it?
Yes.
And we'll all be in communication to confirm, and, you know, I mean, we talk...
And option B would, option B would be who?
Uh, the option number one.
The NSA, US-specific, whatever.
The 1 million, 1 million?
I don't know, many.
Unless y'all wanted to buy the higher...
Sir?
We, we actually drilled down your claims to see, you know, in the last 10 years, there have been, we understand history's not always a perfect predictor of the future, but you guys have not had any claims that have gotten anywhere near that kind of a claim, the million dollar money. If we had to go with million dollar limit, we felt...
Was that on the agenda to take action later on?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, your recommendation then would be, the option A would be number four, I should keep saying option A.
Yeah, I think so.
Option four would be your number one choice.
Number one choice.
And then option one, although I'm more inclined to go to option two, I like liability, you just can't have enough of it, in my opinion, but I'll defer to what the board wants to do on option two.
The only reason we would do that is they just refused to write us.
Yeah. Or, you know, even if it changed a little bit in premium, we're still $100,000 less than option.
Yeah, so unless it came above what the other was, there would no, might be a need to...
That's right.
The vast majority of these claims are going to be covered under the Torque Claim Act, and so with a million dollars of total exposure, that's the total exposure under the Torque Claim Act, assuming that the claim is, in fact, a Torque Claim Act claim, okay? There are other kinds of claims that could fall outside of Torque Claim Act, and you wouldn't have that, you wouldn't have that cap, that is the amount of liability that you've got in place. So, without private insurance, the cap is $500,000 under state law. Your decision to undertake private coverage at a million dollars as the cap for Torque Claim Act cases, that becomes the new cap, that's the cap, that's the max they can recover under state law, all right? So, there's that. Speaking of Torque Claim Act, we've, I think we've had this conversation previously, are we still going to be okay on situations where we have, and, you know, a fender bender type deal, and whereas, in normal circumstances, it would fall under the, it'd fall under the, are we still good to go there?
Yeah.
All right. Super.
And I'll tell you, option four will be the deal. I mean, the underwriters 99% sure, all they're waiting on is a signature sign off, said it's never a problem. So, we can pretty well settle on option four. If it was to change, it's going to be a minute change, and that's a great price.
Well, we can do it. We can still... Because, well, under A, it doesn't quote that, under A, under Wanda's section is talking about taking the other one to 296.
Well, and that, and that's our fault, because...
We just got this yesterday.
So, what I'm saying, you want to go ahead and address this now, and we'll just scrap A?
Sure. You're welcome to go ahead and address it right now.
Sure.
If you'd like to, make it...
I didn't have time to correct on screen.
Why not?
This came in yesterday.
I was here, but I've got your paper over there that's correct, on your agenda, written agenda.
Jen, I need it on my computer, Jen.
I don't want to do that right now.
And that's my fault, and she's over there telling me, she said, I was here after five, you could have sent it to me.
This is Janice, this is all Janice. I'm watching her over there.
Yeah, it's, it's accurate on the, on the hard copy agenda that we're looking at. That's accurate. All right.
So, y'all want to go ahead and take it up now?
Sure.
Whatever, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make the motion for option four, with the contingency of option two. Motion by Mr. Cross to approve option four.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marlowe, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Thank y'all.
Well, another thing, while we're here, to kind of, I know you guys are times valuable, and I know this is the only time you're meeting, this, this month, is we went ahead and secured the work comp renewal, which is a January 1 renewal date. Currently, it's with the Mississippi Public Entity Fund, we've been with them for years and years, and Paul did, he marketed the account, and he marketed it really hard, and I don't know, Paul, do they have a list of the companies that you had sent it to, and it's in your folders that you can go through and look, but it was about five, yeah, companies that were...
It really gets limited because of the police exposure, and some companies don't like the street road, so one doesn't like one thing, one doesn't like the other thing, so we get real limited on that. So, what we did was, we secured the renewal quote with Mississippi Public Entity, and then I've also got a, and this was just for information on the other, on the right-hand side, the Mississippi assigned risk claim. If we had to go into that, which we don't, I just wanted you to see what that number would look like, and it's, it's not a good situation if we did have to go in there, but Mississippi Public Entity is still competitive with your, with your workers comp, and I think that's what we need to say. I've checked out their financials, financials are still strong, I have them send me the financials every year, I've talked to their attorney, I've talked to their accountant, so everything looks like it's good to go.
And as you can see, they're giving you every kind of discount they can. One of the things that we can work on, and that we're going to work on, is the experience mod, it's a 1.18, meaning you're paying 18% more, because a 1 is a flat rate, and anything you can have under that would be a credit mod, so we're going to try to get that under control, that's due to claim activity. But other than that, even with that, they've given you a lot of credits to offset that, and your payroll's up, work comp's based on payroll, you know, and then it's up, and that's why your premium's up a little. Your premium's actually up from last year, if you wanted to look at it that way, $47,000 at the bottom highlighted, which most of that is due to your $387,000 increase in payroll.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure.
So, I mean, you know, it's a really fair deal for the county.
Hey, tell me this, Ms. Laura, just, I see right here, we got the drug-free workplace credit. Do we do drug testing for county employees?
On certain ones, the ones that we're legally allowed to, which is any that has a commercial license, the sheriff handles their department, but anybody else, we do random, such as if they're in maintenance or anything.
So, any county employee can get a random, I guess, if that's the same thing?
Anybody could get a random with reasonable cause, but those that drive vehicles, we do random.
Gotcha. I was just curious, I couldn't remember.
You probably say.
Yeah, I have a clue. My computer was wrong. You had me on 2012 minutes.
Your experience mod's 1.18, so that's where you get...
Connection's not working.
Yeah, and see, the work, the signed risks, they don't give you any credits whatsoever, because it's, it's the place of lunch or door.
Okay, all right. This, did y'all want to... I had my stuff for Jen.
York?
It's on the agenda.
It is? All right, okay. All right, I guess we'll do the minute then. Y'all have anything else for us?
Now that'll do it.
Thank you, as always.
Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Appreciate y'all.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have approval of minutes.
Motion for period number four.
Motion by Bob, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Consent agenda?
Mr. Prove.
Motion by Bob, second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Lance, you going to cover it, John?
I will be standing in for Mr. John, a solo for Ms. Lance.
All right. On the request for approval of items A, B, C, and D in the agenda, would you like me to read them all?
No.
I didn't think so.
Motion, you want to redo them all? Is that all right?
That's fine.
We'll combine A, B, C, and D.
They're not the same, she says it's individually.
Motion to approve A for... Yep, second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it. Motion to approve B?
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it. Motion to approve C?
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it. Motion to approve D?
Motion by Bob, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. Good job, Lance.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the way you read that out, very thorough.
Come on, Ms. Bridget. Morning.
We have a bunch of bid openings this morning for our term bids, the first ones we'll read out are for the joint asphalt bids. So much we don't mess up. The first bid is from Dickerson and Bowen, item one, $96, item two, $90, item three, $3.15, item four, $59, item five, $60.50, item six, $59, and item seven, $60. This bid is from J&amp;L Enterprises, they bid on item one, it's $83.75 per ton, item two, Electronic, this bid was received, did lose the thing? This bid was received electronically from APAC. The first bid from APAC, they bid on item four, it's $58 per ton, item five, $68 per ton, item six, $54 per ton, item seven, $62.75 per ton, and this is out of their plant from Canton. The next bid from APAC, and this will be their Jackson plant, item one, $91 per ton, item two, $92, item three, $4 per square yard, item four, $57, item five, $65.85, item six, $54, item seven, $61.50. This one's from TL Wallace Construction. They bid on one item, it's number two, it's $93.25 per ton. This bid is from AdCamp, item one, $81, item two, $83.25, item three, $3, item four, $55, item five, $58, item six, $55, and item seven, $57. This bid is from Superior Asphalt, this is from their Byram plant, item one, $86.50, item two, $91, item three, $4.70, item four, $58.30, item five, $61.75, item six, $52.30, This is another one from Superior, this is using their Jackson plant on Clay Street. The first bid is item four, it's $59, item five, $62, item six, $55, and item seven, These three bids were received electronically from WE Blaine. The first bid from their Byram plant, it's item one, $90.57, item two, $85.57, item three, $3.75, item four, $56, item five, $63, item six, $56, and item seven, $63. This is Blaine using their Mount Olive plant, item four, $58, item five, $66, item six, $58, and item seven, $66. This one's from Blaine's plant in Morton, Mississippi, item four, $60, item five, $68, item six, $60, item seven, $68.
Is that all of them?
That's the, I've got the liquid asphalt ones we're about to open.
You better not have any more, we don't have more room.
I know, I didn't realize it was going to, that's Ergon.
Was that last item for Blaine? 68 or 68?
68. After I read all these out, y'all can come over and review them if you'd like. All right, thank you. First bid for our liquid asphalt's from Blackledge Emotions, it's on page two of the bid tab, it's item eight, it's $2.74 per gallon, item nine, $3.05. This bid is from Ergon Asphalt, for item eight, they bid $2.05 per gallon, item nine, $2.42 per gallon, and item 11, $2.17. That's the last of the asphalt, I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Let's go move. All right.
What about this slurry seal? Coming with the...
That's your next bid.
Okay.
We received one bid for the scrub seal, slurry seal, and micro-surfacing from TL Wallace.
Will be better to put it one.
Item one, they bid $2.50 square yard, item two, $2.50, item three, $2.60, item four, $2.70. I recommend that sole bid be taken under advisement.
All right, I have a motion to take all these under advisement, by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
These next, you won't have bid tags because there's so many...
Yeah.
...components. The first bid for crushed aggregates was received from Warren Paving. I did have to have an addendum with this, and he did include the signed addendum. They submitted bids for all the limestone and the riprap that we asked for. This bid is from Vulcan Materials. They did submit the signed addendum, and they've also submitted pricing for all of the components we requested. This bid is from White Sands, they did submit the addendum, and also bid on the different prices, and I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Let's move.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Jared, take it under advisement, all in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, might take a little while, Mike broke my letter opener. These bids are for gravel, the first bid, it was received electronically from Blaine, sand and gravel, and they bid on wash gravel and pea gravel. This bid is from white sands, and they also, they bid on wash pea and clay gravel. This bid is from J&amp;L Enterprises, submitted pricing for wash pea and clay gravel, also recommend those be taken under advisement.
Okay.
Let's move.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
I'm sorry, I missed one, I figured, we have one more for gravel.
We already took those under advisement.
No, you're going to have to back up, I apologize, my helper was concentrating and didn't let me know.
Slow on that opener.
Yeah. This was the final bid for gravel, I apologize again, is from Ronnie Williamson, he also bid on the wash pea and clay gravel.
Okay, I guess we'll take that one under advisement now.
Sorry.
Bob, you want to amend your motion?
I have my motion, please, Mr. Williams is there. All right. Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jared, all in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Next bid is for metal culverts. First bid is from GNO Supply, and they've submitted pricing for all the components we requested.
You may have to help him there, Bridget.
I'm scared of that, Mike being too close to me, and I know he's not going to hand it to me.
Well, he's not cutting the paper real good, so it may not hurt you.
You may try it on him a little bit, and see how it works.
Dr. Workman's comp claim, he cuts his finger when he's...
On video, too, I'm not doing that, let me do that another time.
We definitely don't need the insurance guy out watching this.
Or the sheriff's department. Or the Sheriff's Department here.
I'm trying to keep them convinced, man.
All right, the next bid we received for the metal culverts is from Southern Pipe and Supply. And they submitted pricing for everything that we requested. And those are the final two for that, and I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Okay.
Let's go move.
Motion by Bob.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Final bids are for polypropylene culverts. First bid received is G&amp;O Supply. And it's in order. The last bid is from Southern Pipe and Supply. And they've submitted pricing for the components we requested. And I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Let's go move.
Second. Motion by Bob, second by Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I missed my first item when I came up here, I apologize for that, too, I'm getting old. The first thing I need to do this morning is request proposal for, for the pest control services of county building. It's time to go out for those. We've had the current one for almost four years.
Motion to put that out for RFP.
Or for proposals? All right, motion by Bob.
Yes.
Second. Second by Daniel, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Harrison, you have anything for us? You're on our agenda here.
Nothing on it, though.
Okay.
That was pretty funny, Bridget.
Is, uh, Fa- Phase Two of North Shore Landing, is that the one that comes off of Fannin Landing Circle?
Yeah, it touches both. It touches both, it touches, uh, that, and it touches, uh, North Shore Parkway. So, it connects to both of them.
Phase One would, Phase One comes off of North Shore Parkway. Phase Two should come off of, uh, Fannin Landing Circle.
I think it's all connected.
But it is now. Like, I did an appraisal on one of those parcels. And I see, I see two-hundred thousand dollar lot of credit. That's pretty steep.
That's an accurate. Phase Two comes off of.
Two comes off North Shore, one's off the Fannin Circle.
Okay. Okay, all right, I just.
The lot of credit's for what?
For all.
The first one, it's just for, it's a two-hundred thousand dollar lot of credit. You know, it's a strong number, so, that's fine. Just curious, which one was which?
We, uh, we leaked up our LLC requirements in our updated development ordinance. It's, it's two times, it's not a fifty percent, it's two hundred percent. So you're gonna see LOCs that get larger than they have in the past.
Fair enough. All right, Ms. Polk, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's quite all right. Item one, North Shore Landing, Phase Two. We recommend approval of the final flat and an LLC in the amount of two-hundred and two thousand, eight-hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents. Now on that LLC, on the, uh, LLC, we have seen the LLC, but we do not have the copy of that in hand. So you, I don't know whether you wanna make your approval contingent, if I will get it.
I believe so.
Yeah.
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 My motion, um, continuance was getting this LLC, yeah.
For the North Shore landing?
Yeah.
All right, so I second.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
All right, motion by Jared, second by Daniel to approve contingent on receiving the documents. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our Mill Creek Cell Division Drainage Improvements. And, uh, we're recommending approval of paper request number three. In the amount of fifty-two thousand, eighty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. To utility constructors and requesting authority to issue that check.
Some move.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The third and last item I have is North Shore Parkway slash Spillway Road Improvement Project. Uh, we're recommending, uh, pay application number five to Hemp Hill Construction Company in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, seven-hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And requesting authority to issue that check.
Yeah, I'll make that motion approved, but I want, I wanted to ask one question on that. Ten, and I know you may have told me, but my mind may have lost it, but what, uh, completion date time on that?
They've used about, uh, that's on contract days, on calendar days.
Correct.
They've used, uh, I think at the last paper request, about seventy, sixty-six percent of the time.
Okay.
Uh, so this month, we, we catch a little bit more of that.
Yeah.
Have a whole lot of days with the weather.
Yeah.
Uh, so there, I'm gonna say seventy, seventy-five percent.
So, so ballpark timeframe? I mean, I know the weather throws big curveballs on that, but first of the year?
End of the year.
All right.
If, if we get some weather in December, then we can vote.
Okay. All right.
All right. Have a motion by Daniel to approve.
Second.
Second by Bob, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Buster. Ms. Slade.
Thank you, Ms. Protem. Uh, item A, under my section, is acknowledgment of receipt of a letter from the Town of Pilahatchee whereby they agree to the terms and conditions that the county imposed uh, for the installation of the asphalt surface at the Town of Pilahatchee safe room. Board authorized, uh, that activity, but, uh, made it contingent upon receipt of an acknowledgment letter from Pilahatchee, uh, which we have received, it's in your packet. Um, the acknowledgment letter simply makes it clear to the town that we are going to install a surface, uh, for a maximum of about eight parking spaces that are ADA compliant, attenuated to their safe room. Uh, and this is so that FEMA will not demand that the Town of Pilahatchee return all of the grant money. Uh, we are not gonna take responsibility for painting, or delineating, or signing any of those spaces. They are required to do that work. And they are required to ensure that whatever the spaces end up looking like are in fact compliant with the ADA. We're not gonna take that responsibility. We're also not going to go back and redo anything, or repair anything, or fix things later. And so they're acknowledging all of that in the letter, uh, on behalf of the town. It's executed and sent your packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jared to approve, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Gentlemen, item B is a very lengthy and explanatory. I'm sorry, Jay. I, I. Oh, you're just acknowledging what I was saying there. Yes, it is. So, uh, under our contract waste management, our current contract provider, uh, for solid waste collection, you've got, uh, a, an agenda item here that in sum au- authorizes the contractually required consumer price index rate increases. You can see there, uh, it's broken down by each service that's provided fifteen cents per household for solid waste collection. Twenty-seven cents per ton for disposal. And thirty-six cents per ton for roll-off dumpster. And the associated increases, both monthly and annual, are, uh, are set out for you there, so that you can study and look at that. Uh, at the end of the paragraph, I give you some information here about the current contract, which is effective through September, 2021. And so this is, just to let you know, we've got a couple of years left under that second round under that contract. That contract was actually originally entered into four years ago. It was a three-year deal with a three-year renewal. Board chose, uh, at the end of the third year to renew for an additional three-year period. Uh, by state law, we've gotta go back out for RFP on solid waste services at the end of that six-year term. So there's your deadline set out for you there. So all I'm asking you to do today is to authorize the rate increases, and then you can study what that effect is financially. We also, before you, uh, take, take action, we also wanted to point out to you that these are continuing costs under the contract. And the way that, uh, that we handle this, it's in the nature of an enterprise fund, so we collect payments from county residents. It's a s- it's a static charge per month for county residents. It's dependent upon whether they qualify for some rate reduction, age sixty-five and above, and some other, some veterans-type reductions that we have. But for the most part, all county residents, uh, that receive solid waste collection have an address, uh, are charged a flat fee. That flat fee covers our, uh, our costs under the fund. But it only covers us insofar as there's enough revenue coming in to the fund to do it. And so we, we've known, uh, for some time that we need to keep a track on that and make adjustments possibly later. Uh, and so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Which we've operated at a deficit already.
We, yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
What did you just say?
We operate at a deficit already.
Yeah, 'cause you just moved something over here, reached a couple hundred thousand dollars to cover the deficit. And we're not gonna address that today, is that, is that?
That's correct, I'm just simply pointing out that as these CPA increases, which are contractually obligation, contractual obligations that we have, as they come online, obviously, the cost to collect is going up. Uh, and we need to look at the amount that's, uh, that is actually charged for the service. We've gotta just keep an eye on that. All right?
Motion to approve the item B on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Jared to acknowledge the rate increases. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, item C, Mr. President, is a, is a discussion item. Uh, obviously, I didn't want to assume.
I'd like to ask one question. Where do you anticipate the deficit will be by the time we get to contract time? I mean, do we, does this board need to address the monthly fee? Are we gonna wait, are y'all gonna wait until next year when the contract comes up?
Yeah, well, no, I'm not sure. We, we, when we did our budget this year, we knew we were in a deficit and decided to move forward as is without going to the public and trying to.
I've done a little study that I have to present it to you yet, that I've done. Of course, these new figures were not in there, so I'll have to refresh it of what potential we could do going forward.
I think we raised the fees four, five years ago.
At least five, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe six by now.
Before we came here, yeah.
And, and at that time, we said it would last about six years, and it lasted about six years.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, item C, Mr. President, uh, I didn't want to assume anything, so it's just a discussion item unless the board desires to take any sort of action. This is on vector control. As, uh, the board is aware, uh, we have a contractor, Vector Z's Control International, that provides our vector control services. They do that on a flat fee, annual fee. Uh, we are under contract with them. Last, uh, about this time last year, the board decided to extend that contract for one year. They asked for a rate increase, the board authorized a two percent rate increase. Your current contractual obligation annually to VDCI is two-hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, and so, uh, I reached out to VDCI to remind them that at the end of December, uh, that contract will in fact term. And, uh, I explained to them that it would be, uh, apparent, uh, you know, imperative for the board to authorize an RFP for vector control services. Uh, and so they engaged and, and wanted to make an offer. I'm here today just to present a written offer to the board from VDCI. A very nice, uh, letter that was put together by them explaining their, uh, their appreciation for Rankin County. Uh, pointing out to the board, uh, their, uh, their desire to wanna work hand in hand with the board. Uh, mentioning some things that I think are important to, to mention publicly, that while they are, uh, providing service under contract with the county, they also provide a number of additional, what they call good neighbor services, uh, to many in the community. They do that at no cost to the county. Uh, and some of the ones I was not aware of, that I'll just highlight here. Uh, but they, they do that for local churches, for athletic associations, youth and otherwise, school-related organization. Uh, some private property owners are also benefited from their good neighbor services. And Piney Woods School is another one, uh, where they have gone out at, at no cost to the school or to the county, the one. They've actually sprayed Piney Woods campus on at least two or three occasions during the mosquito season. So they, they mentioned that they're fully invested in Rankin County, and they, uh, they take their responsibility to deliver services that protect health, safety, and welfare very seriously. And so they are making an offer today to extend for, uh, twenty-twenty-one, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, the same rate of two-hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars uh, for next year, uh, if the board is interested in entertaining that. They are also, and, uh, prepared to commit to any additional long-term contractual commitment that the board be interested in discussing with them. They're interested in talking about that if the board is interested in that. They didn't wanna presume anything, but for the purposes of the twenty-twenty season, they are willing to provide the services at the same rate as twenty-nineteen. So, I wanted to make that, make you aware of that. I'm gonna provide, uh, this document that I received for you guys to review. Uh, and then if y'all are interested in going forward with that, we, we can take that up before the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with them, thank you.
Yeah, I'm good with them.
Less headaches than before.
Yeah. They've answered everything I've asked for.
And they do, yeah, and they do a lot of just what you said, uh, but individuals, and it allows them, by this contract with, uh, outside, allows them to do that, we couldn't.
So I think we're in a good spot, but you've got the, uh, the ability, uh, as I appreciate it, to accept their offer and lock down next year's service.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Whatever you wanna do with it.
I'm good with doing it. I'm good with doing it.
Uh, we can start to do that.
I just, um, make a motion, yeah.
I'll make the motion to lock down next year's twenty-twenty deal.
That, 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 I made my second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared to add vector control to agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And then make a motion to approve it at the same rate as last year for twenty-twenty.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right, good deal. Do we have a need for, uh, executive session?
We got Wanda still out there.
Oh, sorry, I didn't pass you up.
I think we've already approved of item A, so we'll go on to item B. Authority to renew workers' compensation with MPE Workers' Comp Trust in the amount of six-hundred and four thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars to be paid quarter.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bob.
Right.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
No.
Additional business?
Yeah, we had, I had one additional business thing, and Word, I'm gonna try to get Word to do the click notes of it. But one of the things that had came up, and we had budgeted for, for next year at the Reservoir Fire Department, was a, a new fire truck that was coming up, it was in the queue to come up. And we have the money and the budget to do it and everything else. I wanted to go ahead and get that moving at this point, because they can go ahead and order a truck. There's gonna be a price increase on a lot of these fire trucks that come in January first. So we can get in under the number. Uh, part of the thing the reservoir is gonna do is, they're gonna match money that we give for the truck, the standard rate fee, whatever that is, Word. Uh, that three-hundred, three-hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars that we give to purchase the, the truck. The reservoir is gonna pick up the offsetting cost. I think they're gonna buy about a five-hundred thousand dollar custom truck. So, they were due for a truck anyway, in January. If they go ahead, and we can cut the check to them now, Ms. Laura, for that truck, uh. To the reservoir, to the reservoir for it. Mm-hmm. Instead, they can go ahead and get it ordered under this year's price schedule. Fee's gonna go up about ten to twelve percent probably in January, and would cost them more, yeah, so.
What's the need to cut the check now, though? I mean, rather than just whenever it comes in?
It could be done in December, uh, 'cause they can go ahead and issue the PO to Pierce to buy the vehicle now. It locks the pricing in now.
I understand that.
If we have PO, it would have to be this year.
I understand that.
And it can be in December, yeah.
Are they going to per, issue the PO and purchase it themselves?
Yes.
Be their fire truck on their inventory?
Correct. Under their, under their, under their, uh, equipment maintenance and all that stuff, yeah.
So what you're requesting is us to give additional compensation to them.
Right, whatever the fee were, the fee was that we were gonna purchase the fire truck for. Three-hundred and, whatever the contract price, we were gonna buy a county truck for them. That we were gonna have to end up paying expenses and everything else for equipment, maintenance, all that kinda stuff. We're not doing that anymore.
When they, when they order now, which they certainly can, it's not gonna be in.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be ten months.
Quite a while, so we could come back and allocate the money to them at a later date. It is in the budget, we do have it in there for it.
Correct.
So are they just wanting to know that we're gonna give it to them?
I don't know if you need to write them a letter, or however it needs to go. If somebody can touch base with them to do that, I just wanna be sure they can get the purchase order done in twenty-nineteen.
Okay.
To save them about twelve percent.
Yeah, 'cause they're not gonna have to give any money at this point, they're just gonna requisition, they're just.
Yeah, Laura, we're hanging on that three-hundred thousand a little bit.
And, and, and I'm good with that, I'm good with that. I just wanna be sure that they have what they need to do to proceed, to get the fees up ahead of time. I don't wanna get the cost increase on.
Okay, we'll touch base with them.
Let's let Daniel make a motion to add as additional business, uh, consideration of additional support to the Reservoir Fire Department for the purchase of a fire truck.
Okay.
So that's the add item, and then his motion would be to confirm in writing to the officials of the Reservoir Fire Department that the board is committed in the amount of dollar sign, whatever.
I think it's, I think it's three-twenty-four.
I thought it was three-hundred thousand dollars, I had to get with the fire coordinator, and so we talked about it in revenue this morning.
I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was like three-hundred and twenty-four thousand and change. Somewhere, whatever that number is. Whatever that number was.
That's what we'll insert in there, but that will be in a letter form from Ms. Laura to the officials at Reservoir Fire Department, so that they have something in writing that, that indicates to them the minute that it's. That's what we'll insert in there, but that will be in a letter form from Ms. Laura to the officials at Reservoir Fire Department, so that they have something in writing that, that indicates to them the minute that it's time for money to be transferred, so that they can effect the purchase, it's coming.
Yep, perfect, now they can go ahead and cut their P O from the fire department, two peers to buy their truck, so, yeah, all right, that's the motion I'll make to add first.
Second.
Motion by Daniel to add this item, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And a motion to approve, and.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared to approve allocating three hundred whatever thousand.
Yeah.
And it'll probably take longer than ten months on their truck, this is gonna be a custom cab, and it's, it's gonna be a twenty-year-plus truck.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
See, we didn't, we didn't even have to let Word talk.
That's the quickest he's ever come up in life.
We didn't, we didn't let him talk.
Go on, go on.
We didn't, we didn't let him talk.
I got, I got a few balls out there, he's, he's bent me over here, if I come back and then he need to throw a bullet back.
He didn't, uh, we didn't let him talk.
Chair, chair, the cushion didn't even come up.
He didn't let, didn't let him talk.
Do we have any other additional business?
I do not.
Executive session, do we have a need for executive session?
I don't, I don't have any need.
All right.
Don't, don't ask again.
Recession till December second.
December second, oh, what?
Well, well, December two is the statutory meeting, is it not? All right, so we need to adjourn to December two.
Well, I was just reading my computer.
Well, we, I don't know, Janice might not have had the right one pulled up.
Janice doesn't have that right on the agenda?
Janice doesn't have it right on the agenda again, so here I go back now and saying, did you pull the right sheet up, Janice?
Do we have a motion to adjourn till December second?
Somewhere.
Just as soon as Bob, Bob gets that down, Janice confuses him, you know? Bob, I think you had it right this time, you know? You had it right this time, Janice confused you.
Curveball.
Well done, bitch.
Luckily, we didn't have anything come up.
Told our president, executive, Dan.
Well done, bitch. Steve won't believe it.
Don't ask again about December.
Hey, hey, put on that group message and get.